Testing, testing. Can you all hear me? Carrier free time.
We're going to leave everybody. Thank you guys for supporting me. I know there may not be the microphone for those in the building, but for those who are on the line or web, so they can hear. On behalf of Murray County Chamber and Economic Alliance, our membership, and our circle of excellent sponsors, it's my pleasure to welcome you to our 2024 Mount Pleasant City Commission campaign forum. I would love to present CEO of the organization. So if you look at our key priorities as an organization, and I've told a little bit about this, we'll get to more on Monday for those who may be watching or joining from that. One of our key priorities is to impact our community in a meaningful way, right in front of informing our stakeholders of local and state election opportunities. This time of year, especially in the national election, it's really easy to see what's going on in the national race on a daily basis. But when it comes to the local races, finding out who's running and what they are behind is very important because really important. These local elections, decisions that are made here can impact our lives on a daily basis, sometimes often more than what's done in Washington. So it's very important here. So the goal of the actual is to bring out easily, unbiased, and business-focused insight into the candidates running for this important position in Mount Pleasant City Commission. It's a day in this for our audience, and it's with our partners at Main Street Murray, so we're happy to have you guys here, and we'll see if you can find us on their Facebook page, as well as we'll be posting to our website as soon as we get a chance in the future. I'm happy to record that we've got four of the five candidates joining us tonight. We do have a representative of the fifth candidate that will be speaking in that as well. Tonight's format will be a general form, and each candidate will have three minutes to provide a general opening statement, and their statement of why they feel they should be the best candidate. This following round will ask each of the two questions that the selected candidate has given to them, considering the rise from our candidate questionnaire, and they will have two minutes to respond to each of those questions. We do also have copies of our candidate guide. You guys, if you need a card or if you're staying, people aren't coming, you can find my candidate guide for each candidate for the last state.
And Columbia and Mount Pleasant answered a series of questions, so you can know where they stand on various issues. You can download that using the QR code or go directly to our website, murrayalliance.com, to find that. We do ask that the candidates remain respectful of each other and that the audience remains respectful of the candidates. Following the forum format, we will have some additional time built in. We will ask the candidates to stay, stick around, and then you guys can have one-on-one conversation and ask maybe some specific questions that you would like to. So at this time, we will get things started, and we will call up our first candidate, and that is Bill White. You may need to flip the switch on.
Hello? Oh, it's on. We're good. Ready for me to roll?
Absolutely, and we've got our timekeeper up front.
Good deal. First of all, welcome to Mount Pleasant. It's great to have you here. I appreciate everybody showing up. It's a beautiful afternoon, it's a little warm, but it's nice inside, so that's what really matters. I had to struggle, I'll tell you honestly, with running again. It's been a pleasure to run, but I kind of felt like it may be somebody else's turn, but I had a lot of friends and a lot of members of the community that asked me to do this one more time, please. So that's why I'm here. I have served eight years as a commissioner of the community, the last six years being your mayor, and it has been an honor and a pleasure to do that. During those last eight years, six as mayor, it has been a whirlwind, to say the very least. During that period of time, we have received over $25 million in grants, as well as gotten USDA loans for 40 years at 1%. Guys, you can't go get that everywhere, and having the right contacts, knowing the right people, who to call, when to call, and what to ask for is terribly, terribly important, and that's one of the things that I think that we've been able to do. What we've spent the money on as of right now is a brand-new sewer facility. When I became in office eight years ago, this city was under a moratorium for building. Couldn't build another home. Couldn't do another thing, because past administrations and some of the things that had happened, the whole system was just a disaster. So that project alone was just over $18 million. We're currently working on the water system. I'm very proud to let everybody know that within the last month and a half or so, we have cut our water consumption by almost 300,000 gallons a day. That's huge, and that's through repair leaks, not having to run the plant as much. It's certainly saving all the people in this community money, so that's huge. We've got a brand-new fire hall downtown, literally right over there, for the protection of this community. We've got all these beautiful homes around here. We've got downtown right here, and we didn't have the proper fire protection. Now we do. And when we did that, we also built in new planning and zoning offices in that facility as well. We have firemen there 24 hours a day. We got the down, the gardening and park revitalization done. I don't know if y'all been up to see the new pavilion and what all's done to it. It is beautiful. Got the bathrooms redone, everything's done, and it's turned out to be a very nice park. We're currently working on getting new restrooms at the Airmines Park with ADA accessibility. The Boys and Girl Club has been reestablished as a community center. It's on a trial basis. I will tell you that upfront. We had some problems there before, and we're back again, and again, it is on a, on a basis until we see how everything's going. Right after the first of the year, we're going to do a new Parks and Rec Director, and the downtown revitalization project is underway. Another thing that I want to add without question is we've got the best city staff we've ever had. I currently serve on the following boards: Murray County Industrial Development Board as Vice Chairman, Murray Alliance Board of Directors, Murray Alliance Economic Development Committee, and just yesterday, we were served, received a certificate from the Office of the Comptroller of Currency for our excellent work in budgeting.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, for our questions. The first question, then you'll have two minutes to respond. What does thoughtful and sustainable growth in Mount Pleasant look like to you, and how do you plan to make a positive impact toward this?
What we're doing now, we're making sure as we bring new industry into the community, it fits our community, and it's sustainable. We're trying to make absolutely sure we don't focus just on automotive, because we have seen what that can do to communities. We're not going to be totally automotive. That's why we have a very, very varied workforce here. Also, and it comes up in a lot of communities, but what does really, does fair and affordable housing look like? I don't know, but I think we've got to look at it, and we've got to continue to do that. We're working right now on a comprehensive transportation plan. We're working on rezoning, what that should look like. We're currently getting ready to get a group of engineers to start looking at our streets, how to repair them, which ones needed the worst, which ones will get finished the quickest, and the biggest impact on our community. And always, always, you've got to keep up with technology, manage moving fast. Golly! So to stay sustained in it, you've got to continue to keep your head above water and make sure that you're staying ahead.
Thank you. And for the second question, how do you plan to work collaboratively with each municipality in the county to build stronger relationships and ensure decisions being made are in the best interest of the community as a whole?
With that one, number one, I think we have done an excellent job in working with the Alliance, particularly through Cherry Glenn, and with my time on the Murray County Industrial Development Board as Vice Chairman. We just recently announced Project Extinera. It's a $45 million investment with 85 new jobs. During that period of time, we've had Smaller Stram, Fuel Total Systems, Doug Jeffords, Brazilian Professionals, over $120 million in new industry. $120 million, and roughly 140 new jobs created. And these are sustainable jobs, you asked the first question. These are not cheap-paying jobs, and that's how we work together. During my period too, we've also signed a contract with CPWS. We're now not having to purchase any water from them for what we're doing, because of what we've done, but we secured a contract with CPWS in case we ever had water problems to be able to purchase up to 200,000 gallons a day.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have Jaclyn Granberry join us.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jaclyn Granberry.
If you could use the microphone, please, just for those online. Thank you. Sorry.
Good evening. I'm Jaclyn Granberry. I am the Vice Mayor, and I have also been on the commission for eight years. And it kind of like, I got challenged. It's the reason why that I ended up on the commission, because we had a park that I could not get Park and Recs to look at, I started development on. So I said, okay, I'll run for City Commissioner, and I got it. And I have enjoyed eight years up there. I can't say that we all always agreed to everything, but I have always lived by my vote and tried to stand by my logo, that I'm a voice for the people. And that means taxes, whatever money that I think shouldn't go to, be done, increased, I'm not going to change that. I'm always going to represent the people of Mount Pleasant.
Thank you very much. And now for the questions, and again, you'll have two minutes to respond to each. So the first one, what do you see as the biggest challenge for Mount Pleasant, and how do you plan to address this during your term?
Everybody knows our biggest challenge is infrastructure. Infrastructure is, it's our biggest challenge, and it's going to be a challenge. It's our streets, it's water, it's sewage, with people coming in, it's schools, and it's going to always be a battle. Our city manager met with, met with the water people recently to see about getting more water here, and they did come up with it. And with our five-year strategic plan, hopefully, we're going to be able to supply the needs and take care of infrastructure. We've got to take care of leaks. We have a lot of water leaks, and they got to be fixed. That's part of infrastructure. Our streets, I notice everybody's number one complaint, our streets. It's mines too. But there's two things there. First of all, you've got to have the money to fix them, and second of all, when you're talking about doing, taking care of sewage lines and water lines, it does no good to pave the street, and you've got to tear it right back up to fix that. So therefore, everything has to kind of fall in place. We're not ignoring people when they say our street's so bad. We know they're bad. But we need to take care of one project at a time in order to get there. We just finished up with the sewage plant, and it's also got a five-year strategic plan, and so does the water plant. And as people come in, of course, we're going to have to increase in both of them.
And for the second question, I think you'll get two more minutes to talk about infrastructure, because this one is specific to infrastructure. Mount Pleasant is located in one of the fastest-growing areas in the state and in the country. This tremendous growth will require new and improved infrastructure. How do you plan to provide needed infrastructure improvements, including any required funding?
Well, I kind of covered infrastructure, I'm sorry, but we are one of the fastest-growing cities, and one thing about Mount Pleasant is we're trying to keep it as a hometown feel. I was born and raised here. I love Mount Pleasant. That's why I ran for City Commissioner, because I want to see our city come forth and develop. But it's got to be limited to what we can do at that time, and that's with infrastructure. We cannot just build houses on top of houses and not have water or sewage take care of it. So sometimes we have to limit the increase here, just so that we can have the utilities and things that they need. But the next thing of it is, when you bring in more people, you're bringing in more funds. How do you take care of infrastructure with funds?
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, and I appreciate your vote.
Move on to candidate number three, and that is Lonnie Thomason. Absolutely. In three minutes.
Good afternoon. Now, Bill and Jackie, they've been in the limelight now for several years, so I'm going to give you a little history on me, because I'm going to tell you the face of Mount Pleasant has changed through the years. 20 years ago, I would have known everybody in this room, and when we had the debate in 2014, I never realized the new faces that were in Mount Pleasant. But anyway, good afternoon. I would like to thank the folks at Murray County Chamber and Economic Alliance for hosting this event. The event, meet the candidate. Mount Pleasant has three positions open for election, City Commissioner. We have five people running for the three positions. My name is Lonnie Thomason, and I am seeking to fill one of those positions. I'm not a newcomer. This is my third time to run for Commissioner. I've always felt that I could help Mount Pleasant and its citizens. I grew up just about three miles south of here in the Sandy Hook community. I've been in this area all my life. Soon it'll be 57 years. I attended Mount Pleasant Elementary School and was the last class to attend Haylong High School. I grew up with not a lot. I split wood for $0.5 a day. I slowly moved my way up to mowing grass at Arlington Cemetery for $2 an hour. I progressed up from there, doing different jobs. I attended Columbia State Community College. I worked at the Williams Pork Phosphate Washer for Occidental Chemical Company until it closed. I then got into the long-haul trucking business, which I owned and operated for over 10 years. I sold that business and went to work for Union Car Bag Company in Columbia, Tennessee. After they closed, I went to work at SciTech in Mount Pleasant, formerly the old store for organic plant. I worked in the maintenance department, and I'm certified welder, pipe fitter, machinist, and work on all types of equipment. During my 57 years, I've been involved in a lot of different fields. My father and I had built three houses. We didn't pick up the phone and call a contractor. We built from the ground up. The last house we built was almost 4,000 square feet. I've laid several feet of sewer and water lines and poured a lot of concrete. I've also built a few roads. I own rental property and have several tracts of land. I'm also an International Union of Operating Engineers Union Negotiator. I served on the Mount Pleasant Regional Planning Commission from 2008 until 2011. I have knowledge in growth, planning, and subdivision regulations. At the end of my term on the Planning Commission, I served as Vice Chairman. I have been blessed, and I've done pretty well. I know what it takes to get things done. I tell you this not to brag or boast, but to let you know I have knowledge on a lot of different topics, and that is what you need in a City Commissioner. The commission deals with a lot of issues, and you need a well-rounded person to fill the position. A vote for someone is basically saying I'm going to hire this person to take care of my business. And I would appreciate your vote. I want to thank you and look forward to serving as your City Commissioner.
Thank you for that, Mr. Thomason. Now for the questions. Again, we'll ask one, and you'll have two minutes to respond, and then we'll ask the second. Question one, how do you plan to work collaboratively with each municipality in the county to build stronger relationships and ensure decisions, the decisions are being made, that are being made, are in the best interest of the community as a whole?
I don't have any problem working with any municipality, and our closest and biggest is going to be Columbia, and they have a lot of activity that is fixing to take place on that Mount Pleasant Pike. And I'm just afraid that they're going to ruin that Mount Pleasant Pike area, which is historic, and I feel that they should make them have access, grassy grass, to the fore lane and not come out on that. But that's Columbia. We don't have anything to do with that. But if we can work with any municipality, I don't have any trouble with it, but now Columbia is going to be the biggest, because we're dealing with them on our water and our grass and egress from Columbia, north and south on 43.
Question number two, what do you see as the biggest challenge for Mount Pleasant, and how do you plan to address this during your term?
I think Mount Pleasant at this time is at a good point. We have a new city manager, Mr. Philip Rooms. I've dealt with Philip on a couple of issues in the last couple of months, and I'm going to tell you Philip is ready to get something done in this town, and I'm going to tell you I am too. Now, we can't kick, keep kicking the can down the road another 10 years, because some of us are not going to worry about it in 10 years, because we're not going to be here. I want to see some things start happening in town. I read on this manager's report from two years ago that if they could raise property taxes, I believe it was $0.12, they could start paving roads. We got hit with 41%, 41 cents on top of a reappraisal year. And I've talked to a lot of people, and they're not happy with what they're seeing, so.
Thank you so much, Mr. Thomason. All right, at this time, we'll have Lori Knowles. And just for a reminder, three minutes for opening statements, and then we'll go into questions. It's all yours.
Good afternoon. My name is Lori Baker-Knowles, and I'm running for Commissioner of Mount Pleasant. I grew up in Mount Pleasant. I'm a lifelong citizen of Mount Pleasant. I've lived here all my life. I graduated high school in Mount Pleasant. I attended Columbia State Community College, and then I furthered my education at Middle Tennessee State University, receiving a degree in interdisciplinary studies, elementary education, and a minor in psychology. After that, I started to work in the education system. I worked at Withmore Middle School, and then after that, I transitioned to the Department of Children's Services. There is where my voice for children and families began to grow. From there, I moved to Clair Vida, which is also a foster care agency. So I say that to say this. I've always been a voice for children and families. I've always been a voice for children and families. And I'm going to say it one more time. I've always been a force for children and family, and I will continue to be that voice for children and families, and my neighbors in Mount Pleasant as well. So I am Lori Baker-Knowles, and again, I'm running for Commissioner of Mount Pleasant.
Well, thank you for that. And now for the questions. Question one, Mount Pleasant is located in one of the fastest-growing areas of the state and the county. This tremendous growth will require new and improved infrastructure. So how do you plan to provide that needed, those needed infrastructure improvements, including any required funding?
Okay, so my plans are to do a full and complete review of the budgetary resources for the budget year, and I would also propose a relocation of funds in much-needed areas where we are lacking. I would also seek alternate funds through grants, federal grants, that can fill in deficits if we have any. So we will utilize the federal grants to fill in the holes.
For the second question, what does thoughtful and sustainable growth in Mount Pleasant look like to you, and how do you plan to make a positive impact towards this?
Thoughtful and sustainable growth. In order to have sustainable growth, you have to have the available resources. We have to be able to cater to our demographics. We have to get back to that small-town feel, but yet be able to grow within the infrastructure by having our retail stores come back, having our demographic needs met, not only on one side, but on all sides. We have to get back to the old basics, but we have to have those available resources in order to do so.
Thank you so much, Lori. Now, those are the four candidates who were able to join us this evening out of the five. Now, Willie Anderson was unable to make it, but current City Commissioner Pam Johnson has agreed to read a letter that she prepared, and we will allow that this evening as well. So if you could come up to the mic and read that. So if you could come up to the mic and read that.
Good evening, everybody. I'm very blessed to be able to represent my friend and fellow commissioner Willie Alderson tonight. Willie's doing what she does every day, much like Lori. She's got a real heart for the community and for children, and one of her current foster children has a visitation that she has to have that child to, or she could be held in contempt. So that's what she's doing right now, is making sure that that child is getting a visitation with their family. And this is the letter that she sent me to read to you. In the next four years, my goals are supporting staff towards completion of our, of our streets maintenance plan. More importantly, supporting the paving of streets, repairing sidewalks on an annual consistent basis. This is accomplished by industry that will no longer receive tax breaks from the state using the property tax to fund the street programs, and that refers to many of the developments we've had with businesses that got breaks to get started. Now they're running out of that time, and now the city will start receiving those funds. The City of Mount Pleasant Water and Sewer Fund have to operate on a sound financial basis. The Tennessee Board of Utility Regulations has oversight over all Tennessee utilities or requires that all be self-supporting, and that reasonable rates and fees be charged to cover all expenses of the utility, including depreciation. It, TBOUR, or T-B-O-U-R, identifies the system as financially distressed. The board has the full authority to mandate rates, so all expenses are covered. This happened to this city, and it was put on a moratorium several years back. However, we may not be able to lower rates, but with good financial planning, along with growth, the implementation of access fees for the new construction, our goal is for taxes to finally level out. The positive, the city has invested in water treatment plant, upgrades to wastewater treatment plants, reducing unaccounted water loss, and most importantly, having the right people who don't dwell in the past, don't just think about today, but are committed to planning for tomorrow. I'm also proud to be, I'm also proud of our Director of Finance and our staff, which are amazing. I'm proud of her for getting a budget certificate, certification, and we were recognized by the Controller Office for our 2024-2025 fiscal year budget at the highest level that they could give. We are headed in the right direction. Let's keep this going for the next four years, so I am asking for your vote. Willie Alderson, we'd love your vote. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Well, this concludes the formal portion of our evening, and we will still have the remaining time for you all to interact one-on-one with the candidates. I do want to thank the candidates for joining us this, this evening, and I also, again, want to thank Main Street Murray for broadcasting this live. I want to thank you all for attending. I do want to remind you that early voting does start on October 16th and runs through October 31st, with Election Day on November 5th. Following that, our next public affairs event will be on November 19th. We will have breakfast with all, with the mayors. This will be the city mayors and county mayors all on one panel, where we'll be able to talk more in depth about some of the issues and things that we touched on this evening. So I'd welcome you to watch for that and be sure to register for when that opens up. And again, a reminder, you can find our candidate guide on our website and using the QR codes. Again, I want to thank you all for coming and thank the candidates for being out, or coming out this evening as well, and so I hope you all have a great rest of your evening, and thank you for joining us tonight.